Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, January 28, 2025, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing item, Old Business Number One.
I got my papers out of order. Is there anything else? Sorry, y'all. An ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Brian Dozier to rezone 1009 CM Fagan Drive from MX dash N to MX dash C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Martin Surveying Solutions LLC dated 6/27/24. Charles?
This is a proposal to relocate, not relocate, expand self-storage, um, storage unit facility on the opposite side of CM Fagan to the south side of CM Fagan. The zoning change is required because MXN does not allow self-storage, however MXC does. Uh, Planning and Zoning reviewed this, our Planning Director, Planning Coordinator, uh, reviewed this, uh, they all found it was appropriate. I believe we have someone here to speak on this one?
Step to the mic, please. Give us your name and city.
Yes, sir. My name's Darby Lambert. I'm from Gonzales, Louisiana. I'm representing Brian Dozier.
Anything additional you'd like to add?
No, sir. I was just asked to come that someone may have had more questions about the...
I think in the last meeting someone had, you know, questioned whether that brewery was going over there, but this is just many storage, correct?
It's just storage. It's actually one big building, all climate controlled. We have a facility at 1200 CM Fagan that we're 100% full all the time, and we're just looking to expand. At the new one? All different sizes. It looks like around 200, 150 roughly to 200. I have a preliminary drawing of the building if you guys would like. Sir? Okay.
Anyone else from the public? Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Darby Lambert.
Darby.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, January 28, 5:33 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Our prayer, please. Eternal Father, we thank you on this evening, thank you Father God that this is the day you made, we rejoice and we are glad about it. We thank you Father God that your word declared that the steps of a righteous man have been ordered. We thank you Father for every step that we take, for every move that we make. We thank you right now for your darling son who you allowed to die upon the cross just for our sins. Father God, I know I've paid this petition before you many times and I've said it in my prayer before, but if ever a time we need you, we need you right now. And Father God, we ask you to continue to let your light shine upon us, continue to show us grace and continue to show us mercy right now, Father. I lift up our city to you right now to continue to bless our men and women who serve us and protect us from the fire department and the police department. I ask you to continue to bless each council member and their families, continue to bless each district in they serve, continue to bless our mayor and his administration right now, Father God, continue to touch each city worker right now. We thank you right now, Father God, that everything will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight, where you will get all glory, you will get all honor and all praise. Father God, we just thank you right now because we always want to please you and make you happy and do everything decent and order in your sight. Therefore, we just honor you, we praise you, we thank you on this evening, in your darling son, Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance, I ask that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, can I get an approval of our minutes from January 14, 2025, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Next thing on our agenda, upon the report right now, uh, each council member will receive a, it's hyperlinked as well, for the, um, everyone in the audience to see, and it also will be placed on the website if I'm not mistaken, a copy of our year-to-date budget report. It is 77 pages long. Uh, at this time, I ask each council member to review that at your leisure within the next two weeks of our next meeting, and if you have any questions or concerns, I ask that you please submit me an email, uh, put it in writing for our next meeting. Anyone have any questions? All right. Final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Brian Dozier to rezone 1009 CM Fagan Drive from MX dash N to MX dash C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Martin Surveying Solutions LLC dated 6/27/2024. Charles Boucher.
As stated during the public hearing, this is, um, a rezoning request, uh, to facilitate the expansion of the self-storage business across the street. Um, the reason for the rezoning is because MXC allows self-storage and MXN does not. Planning did review this, our Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as our Planning Director and Planning Coordinator, and it was recommended for approval. And we did have representative here, I don't know if he's, yes, he's still there, Mr. Darby is still there.
Okay. Anyone else from the public on this item? Anyone from the council? Yes, good. A person, uh, please come up to the front. How you doing, Mr., uh, Mr. Brian?
I'm Darby Lambert.
Mr. Darby.
Presenting Brian.
Okay, then. Mr. Darby, how you doing?
Fine, sir.
I'm the councilman in District Three. Explain exactly what you're doing over there, please.
We're looking to build one big building that would encompass several...
Hold on one minute.
I want to see if it's a mic.
This mic.
Yeah.
If this not, if this mic not working, let's switch mics out, because last, two weeks ago, we're having a lot of problems. Nobody able to hear the people's talking with this mic, and I should have brought it up, but now it's just not coming up. Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. Um, I actually have a drawing of the building laid out.
Let me get a copy, please. Thank you.
It's to be one big building with a drive, concrete drive all the way around the building.
Okay. All right, then.
It, it looks like around 150 and up.
Oh, you, you...
I didn't actually count them.
Oh, no, you're fine. That, that's all I wanted to know, sir, and, uh, to the rest of the city, look at the planning, MXN to MXC, it's a no-brainer, and I'm talking about, I have no problem in voting for this, but I'm glad you had something to show on paper. Did Planning and Zoning get a copy of this here?
No, sir. That's just, uh, a preliminary drawing.
Okay.
That, that's what we proposed to do, and that drawing was done after that last meeting, after the Planning and Zoning meeting.
Okay.
And that's not, you know, set in stone that we have to do it like that. We want to do it what's best for everybody.
Okay.
So, we can change the design of the building if we need to, to accommodate and have it look like we want it to look, or like you want it to look.
No, 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 it's, it's what the city requires, but thank you, uh...
Yes, sir.
What type of material y'all using on this building, sir?
I think it's metal building.
Metal building.
Yes, sir. And if the facade does need to be changed, um...
Well, right now, the city letting people build metal buildings, so you shouldn't have a problem with it.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public on this item? Is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Introduction of ordinance number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to increase fees for leases and services at Hammond Northshore Regional Airport. Charles Boucher.
Uh, this is just the introduction. This is the public notice that, um, if introduced tonight in two weeks at the next council meeting, we'll have an opportunity for public comment, and of course, between now and then, if there are questions or concerns, this can be, um, sent to me or the airport director, um, and we can review them and have answers for the next meeting. Um, since the last time this was introduced, we did have the Airport Authority Board meet and approve these rates. We also conducted an appraisal at the airport, which found that these rates were in line with current, um, appraised values of the airport. The effective date would be July 1st, so there would be an opportunity for us to, uh, get the word out to the airport community, and, um, we're, we're still basing the rates on the previous, um, the previous year, so they're not going to go up before July 1st.
All right. Anyone have any questions on this introduction? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance number two.
Introduction of an ordinance establishing a temporary 180-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of permits for off-premises, premises, signs, and billboards within the city of Hammond, providing for variances, and providing a severability clause. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes, so I, I received some complaints about recent billboards, um, new billboards being placed in the city, questions about density and, and whether they're appropriate. I looked at the UDC, I think that it's lacking in, um, controlling density, and I have some questions about the approval process, so, um, I have prepared this moratorium to give us about six months to come up with the best practices and best changes in the UDC. I've talked to members of the Planning and Zoning and intend to submit, uh, at least two examples from other jurisdictions of how, um, more robust billboard, um, ordinances, so that we can see if the city needs to update ours. From my understanding, from the people who come, some of the people who complained, there used to be a moratorium on all new billboards, and that was, uh, done away with when the UDC was adopted, and, um, so I think there's some questions on how we better regulate this.
Any other question from anyone on the council? Anyone having a question on this item? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to authorize Benny's Place to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Didn't Planet LLC, held on Saturday, February 8th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The event will take place at K-Square Park, 200 West Charles Street, Alec Griffith.
I'm Alec Griffith, uh, 209 Blackburn Road, Hammond, LA. Um, I'm the CEO of We Didn't Plan It, and this is our first installment for this year of our seasonal, uh, clothing, music, and art festival that we do in Kate Square Park that we started last year. Um, they've been very successful so far. Appreciate you guys, um, allowing us to do that here in the city, um, and we're just looking to have Benny's Place back out to serve alcohol, um, just beer, and I'm, I'm pretty sure just beer, we're not doing alcohol or wine or anything, so, um, just looking to get that approved again for this round.
Anyone from the public have any item, any questions on this particular item, sorry? Anyone from the council? Is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law to Benny's Place during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Didn't Planet LLC, held on Saturday, February 8th, 2025, from 11:00 to 6:00. The event will take place at K-Square Park, 200 West Charles Street.
I'm Alec Griffith, 209 Blackburn Road, um, same thing, um, just for the open container in the park.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council? Again, if there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Thank you. Resolution number three.
A resolution to approve the appointment of Kayla Morgan, representing largest assessed property owner, Regions Bank, to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term, effective immediately to December 31st, 2026. Michelle Kendall.
Good evening, council, and happy new year. It's been a while since I've been up here.
Happy new year.
So, we are, um, back again with, uh, four appointments for our board members, um, starting with our largest assessed property owners. We have three seats of those, um, so the one that, um, we are asking for you to consider tonight first is, um, from Regions Bank, and Kayla Morgan is their nominee. Um, for all of our nominees, you have, um, their resume, um, with, um, the certification of their eligibility to serve in our board, um, with a letter detailing that, so, um, hopefully those packets were helpful for you to review in your determination. Um, so, yes, um, can answer any questions about that, that process, um, but this is the first of three of our largest assessed property owner seats, and Kayla is here tonight if you have any questions for her.
Could you come up, Ms. Kayla? Anything you would like to say?
Um, well, first of all, um, I think it would be a great question to ask me why I wanted to take this position. It is a volunteer position, so probably for the last six years, I've been looking for a way to give back to my community, and my expertise is in marketing, so I have 30 years worth of strategy, marketing, salons and spas in the US, the UK, and Canada. So, for me, this was the best fit, was to take over the seat position. I, um, actually had been serving on the committee for the past year, so I've really enjoyed it. We have a great team, very, very smart individuals, that helped with the rebranding for the board, and also looking for different ways to draw surrounding communities, as well as more businesses for the merchants in downtown, so. And then my credentials are in your packet if you want to check those.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council?
I'll just say, Kayla, thank you for being willing to serve this volunteer position, um, and it's a very important position, and we're happy to have you.
Yes, thank you. Is there any unreadiness before I move forward or call for a vote? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Wells.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to approve the appointment of John Exnicious, representing the largest assessed property owner, Hancock Whitney Bank, to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term, effective immediately to December 31st, 2026. Michelle.
Same applies here, this is our second of our largest property owner seats. Uh, John has served on our board since, um, 2020, and he is also here if you have any questions.
Ms. Lisa can now say his name because he's come before us so many times.
So, um, really enjoy serving on this board, uh, thank you. Enjoy serving on this board and seeing all the progress that we've made, um, even since the time that I've been there, and, um, it means a lot to me to be able to give back to my, to town that I, that I reside in, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Is this your same seat, or are you taking a different seat?
Same.
Same seat, okay. Thank you for being willing to serve, and we're happy to have you.
Yes. Anyone from the public have any questions on this particular item? Is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Diveterio.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to approve the appointment of Justin Cash, representing the largest, largest assessed property owner, First Guaranty Bank, to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term, effective immediately to December 31st, 2026. Michelle.
Sir, last largest assessed property owner seat, and, um, we have a nominee, Justin Cash, from First Guaranty Bank. Um, he is here tonight. I've actually never met you in person. Okay, here we go. Uh, come on up here, Justin.
Appreciate the opportunity. My dad sat on that board, the DDD board, and it meant a lot to him, and it would be an honor for me to do the same.
All right. Anyone from the public have any concerns or questions on this item? Anyone from the council?
Say it again, thank you for being willing to serve, Justin. I didn't know your dad was on the board, so that's a nice connection.
Is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to approve the appointment of Hillary Ratchek. Ratchek?
Yeah.
Representing the Westside Business and Property Owners to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term, effective immediately to December 31st, 2026. Michelle Kendall.
Um, so, this seat is different from the other three. This is the Westside Property Business Owner seat as specified in our statute, um, which requires five, uh, letters of support nominations from, um, business or property owners on that side of the railroad tracks, so you can see those listed there, um, and, um, all of those folks that have felt that Hillary would be a good fit for us, um, we'd be thankful to have her too. She's also here, um, so if she'd like to come up and answer any questions, if she's available.
Hello, I'm Hillary. Um, I work at Gulf Coast Bank, I'm a certified mortgage advisor there, so I have the unique opportunity to where I work in growing our community and helping people plant their roots here. My goal with that is that I help people use their mortgage as a tool, so that when they move here and they get here, they can grow here. Um, I also own a more, uh, a marketing company, and I've done a lot of work in public relations when it comes to, um, political campaigns, uh, specifically here in Hammond and, and on the state level, so I do have some experiences on committees like Tangiho Parish Women's Organization and the Ponchula J.C.'s, and I would love to apply what I've learned there and the expertise that I have, and all of my connections with other members in the community to help support the DDD in, in their efforts, so thank you.
Anyone from the public on this particular item? Anyone from the council?
Thank you for being willing to serve.
Is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
At this time, again, I would like to thank each one of the, the appointees to the DDD Board, thank you for your support.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution regarding the termination and dissolution of the Hammond Tangiho Home Mortgage Authority.
Stan Dameron, live at 511 West Robert Street here in Hammond, Louisiana. I'm here representing the, uh, Hammond Tangiho Home Mortgage Authority. I was the chairman. We dissolved the mortgage authority December 31st of 24, it, last year. We had to dissolve it in order to get the CPAs to give us a financial statement, which your attorney wanted to have, showing there are no liabilities most of all. Uh, I don't know if you have a copy of it, if you've seen it?
Yes.
I've seen thousands of financial statements across Louisiana. I've never seen one that has checks in it. Always have numbers. Uh, we did bring to the city, we've already handed over a check, the residual that was in the, the, 273,518 dollars and 52 cents. Do you have any questions?
Anyone from the council have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions on this particular item?
Thank you, Stan, for everything that you've done for this community through that organization.
Yes.
And thank you for this donation to the city of Hammond.
It's been an honor to provide all the services we had to the citizens of Hammond.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else with any questions or concerns on this item? Is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution, one, accepting a $15,080 grant from the Etwood Barney Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program to purchase portable radios for the Hammond Police Department, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. There is no match requirement. Charles Boucher.
This is the state version of, uh, the federal JAG grant that we apply for every year. Um, we're fortunate here in the city to be able to apply both for the federal grant directly and for a state grant, so this would give us enough funds to purchase approximately eight more portable radios. I think we've done pretty good over the course of the last three or four years. I think we've now replaced most of the radios. I, I think this might guess to around 60 of the 80 or so we were aiming to replace. Um, and again, these are radios that were purchased originally back around 2006, 2007 after Katrina, so they're old, they're out of service with the manufacturer, parts are very hard to find. Um, we've been fortunate to work with a couple of other manufacturers that are on state contract to get newer, more, um, technologically advanced radios to replace them, so we're just asking for the council's approval. Uh, there is no match requirement.
All right. Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Again, is there any unreadiness before I call for a vote? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Resolution number nine.
A resolution to purchase five dash cameras for the Hammond Police Department for a total of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. State contract number four four zero 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 two eight five eight two. Charles Barsher.
Uh, the quota invoice here can be a little bit confusing. Um, the cameras themselves are, are bundled with a five-year service agreement. So the amount that we're paying per camera per year is around nineteen hundred and forty dollars. Again, it's for five cameras. So it's under ten thousand dollars a year for the five cameras, um, with the service agreement. The reason we do the sixty-month or five-year service agreement is we lock in that pricing under state contract. Uh, it won't go up over the next five years. Um, a lot of these state contracts are up, like they're, they're re-upped every year. There's a renewal, uh, option and sometimes the pricing gets adjusted by, by buying it this way. We're locking in that pricing for the next five years. This would come out of the police department's budget. Um, they're adding cameras, replacing cameras within their fleet. These are dashboard cameras for, um, for the units.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yes, I do. It's Charles. You might can answer this here. So when do the cameras come on when they're in the vehicles?
Typically, they've come on when the lights are activated, when the lights and sirens are activated. They'll come on. Um, I know that some of the older cameras would also come on when the doors were opened. Um, I think they're also synced with the body cameras. Uh, I know the older system we had was like if an officer made a stop and exited the vehicle, if his dashboard cam was on, the body cam would also activate automatically. I think that's the same situation here.
What about when they're in the, in that, when they drive in the unmarked cars? So how do they still work? Are these cameras not for?
I think these cameras are specifically for the patrol units.
Okay. So when we dealing with the unmarked cars, how do we, how, how do the public know what's going on when they're in the unmarked vehicles? I'm just wondering. Or that's not for us to know?
It's an unmarked vehicle. So typically if they're using an unmarked vehicle, they're, they're doing some type of surveillance operation and the idea is not to let the public know that they're doing that. Um, so for example, the street crimes or narcotics units or detectives, they may, they may use unmarked vehicles, um, you know, to serve a warrant or something like that. Unmarked vehicles work differently than marked vehicles.
All right. Thank you.
All righty. Anyone else have any questions on resolution number nine? If there any unreadiness before I call for a vote. Pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
A stay.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number ten.
A resolution authorizing Hammond BBQ Inc. to sell, serve, or otherwise handle alcohol on city property within the boundaries of North Kate Street from East Charles Street to approximately one hundred and seventy feet north of East Robert Street and from North Kate Street to the west perimeter of the adjacent parking mall from three to eleven P M. Friday, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and from ten A M. to five P M. on Saturday, um, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Brian Chiree.
Thank you all. Hope you all well.
Evening.
Thank you for what y'all do. Um, representhammubq.com, Brian Chiree, nine hundred West Colorado Street, Hammond. Um, uh, this resolution and the next, I'll combine those two, same speech. Um, uh, this is our twenty-second year of producing this event and, uh, for Hammond. We've given almost half a million dollars back to local charities over those twenty-two years. Um, actually, I think it's, it's a little more than that. I don't have the total exact figure, but, um, we've traditionally done it, uh, on the, on the south side of Morris and Thomas down in that area with the pavilion being built, um, for this year. I'm gonna see how it works, but, um, we found a space, um, after looking at quite, a few sites, but the one that would be most concise and less disruptive to downtown, um, uh, is the, is the new, uh, space that's there, taking up a block in a parking mall on North Kate and then, uh, a kind of a empty block by guys there, as you can see on the, um, on the map. Uh, and, uh, we wanted to keep it in downtown as close as we could to keep, so the businesses downtown and everywhere could, could benefit from that and, uh, being on the, on the concrete thought it would be good. So, um, I know this council, when you, when everyone was new the first time, I can't reach out to each of you individually. I haven't done that for this because we've kind of, I think you've had the opportunity to see the event and understand what it is. So, um, we're just asking for this, uh, you know, to continue what we've, what we've done for the last twenty-two years.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council have any questions on this item?
Brian, you guys are still not doing the professional.
We're not doing the professionals. We're not, we're not doing that. It took up, that took up so many parking malls downtown and post-COVID, um, the, the restrictions that the, the professional, the K C B S, uh, that was sanctioning us, uh, had was, uh, over cumbersome and then, and, and the, we didn't make any money on that. It didn't, it was really more a draw just for in general and it, it was a complete wash and.
Made everybody mad downtown.
It made a lot of people upset and, 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 you know, we weren't trying to do that, but, um, at the end of the day, we came back and realized we're trying to give money back to local nonprofits, primarily Richard Murphy Hospice, Tark, some of the animal societies and the, um, um, Our Daily Bread, Council on Aging. We get, we, we spread it out amongst that. Um, Richard Murphy Hospice, I said this last year, uh, they were unable to make, be here with me this evening, uh, Donna and Jody, but, uh, they're taking over the primary organization of it for doing something like this for volunteering for so many years becomes a, it's, it's a, it's a big project to, to put on and orchestrate. Um, so they're taking over the, doing the heavy lifting and, um, but, but Hammond BBQ Inc. is, will continue to be the organizing event, but they're really doing a lot of heavy lifting. They'll be the primary beneficiary and then Tark and then other, the local, other local between, um, Council on Aging and, uh, Tangi Humane Society and there's a handful of them that we turn around and, and give all the money back to. So I say all the money. We keep a few thousand dollars so we can start up the next year.
Anyone else? Yeah, I got one question. Brian, what happened to that little map you had drew last time? You don't have no more maps. You be drawing, giving out to us, huh?
I know. Well, because in, in the past, what I had done is I came with my little packets and then this time they said, well, send me the map and send me everything. So I was like, okay. Well, it's up on the screen and I thought y'all would have it too.
It's hyperlinked, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know. I, I'll print you one. I'll bring you one tomorrow. You want one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I'll do that. I'll drop one off up here tomorrow.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. You got it.
Anyone else from the public? Any unreadiness before I call for a vote? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman, Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number eleven.
A resolution granting Hammond BBQ Inc. a waiver of the open container law on city property within the boundaries of North Kate Street from East Charles Street to approximately one hundred and seventy feet north of East Robert Street and from North Kate Street to the west perimeter of the adjacent property, adjacent parking mall from three to eleven P M. Friday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and from ten A M. to five P M. on Saturday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Brian.
You could do it all over again.
Da-da. Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Any unreadiness before I call for a vote? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Brian. Hope to see y'all out there. Please come out. Thank you.
Councilman, um, before we move on to reports, there were a pair of introductions that were submitted to the council clerk that apparently didn't reach her. Um.
We're gonna take those up at the next meeting.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna request that they'll be introduced tonight so that the public hearing could proceed next meeting?
We're gonna take those up at the next meeting. Reports.
Uh, snow. We, uh, truly were, for the most part, lucky. Usually it's ice, sleet, uh, trees falling over with the weight, limbs breaking off throughout the streets. Um, this, this particular event, we were fairly lucky. Uh, people stayed home, businesses closed. Uh, we really went, for the most part, unscathed. So I'd like to thank everyone for actually doing what needed to be done to get through that event. Um, the rainbow trout that we talked about last meeting didn't get put in, but they are in now as of last Friday by Wildlife and Fisheries. Like to thank them again. If you know anyone who likes to fish, rainbow trout is in Zoumerie Pond. Thank you, sir.
Any council reports?
Just pretty much same thing with me. We enjoy, we enjoyed the snow. Uh, Hammond looked beautiful with the snow around and no lights, uh, going out. That was, that was awesome. Not to, not to have a lot of power out for the citizens, at least that I know of. My district, I didn't get any calls. So, uh, I was very, very happy to enjoy, uh, the snow when everybody had their lights. So, um, yep, that's about it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, no, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the mayor administration for how they handled things during the snowstorm. Uh, they had sand on the bridges, which helped out a whole lot. So I appreciate that, everything that y'all did in the time of a crisis. Then I'd like to give, uh, thank you for Desiree, for what all she done for Monet Park and everybody are part of it. And that's it. I said, I'm gonna say all good things tonight.
Anyone else have any other reports?
Final report that I have that you guys will be hopefully receiving, the final report on the water and sewage report. We'll be able to move forward with that hopefully by the next meeting. Uh, from receiving that information prior, I would like for everybody to make sure you review that information so we can make a, a good decision on what needs to be made. There's gonna be some other additional information, uh, if I'm not mistaken, from the conversation me and Charles had, where they're gonna add other municipalities around us to see what the rates and stuff that they have imposed. Cause we gonna have to do it, cause, uh, to be in guideline. And with that being said, uh, we should go ahead and look at all of this with the water sewer and with the garbage and go ahead and move forward and put all this stuff to bed. If there are any other additional updates, anything you received at, by email. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.